It is October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Carmen. Busca.
Yes.
Fortune. McConnell.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Next is the consent agenda, which includes approval of the agenda, approval of claims, approval of minutes from October second, two thousand twenty-three, and approval of pay request number one for five hundred sixty, I'm sorry, five hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred dollars to B R Z Coatings, Inc., for the water tower rehab project.
Second.
Busca.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes. Staff reports, Public Works.
Today was, today was the first fall yardways pickup. The next one is in two weeks on October thirtieth, then November sixth, and the last one being November thirteenth. The big tower is back in service and we are still just waiting for the upper fall protection devices to be installed before we can close out the project and that be finished. The downtown is pretty much finished. Volmers were here today doing the sign install. The street department did paint downtown, but they still have to get the, there's a little bit of paint that they have to remove yet. And then Memers will do the dirt work at First and Third Avenue intersections at some point this week, and then downtown project should be pretty well wrapped up. Seventh Street, they have gravelled down up to Stock Avenue. They did the last water main crossing, which would go to the fairgrounds today, and I think they have maybe half a block of water main to install from Third to Fourth Avenue yet. And then their plan is to switch over and finish up the storm sewer, and they plan on having all the underground work within the street done by the end of this week. Hopefully, that's the case. And then from there, they will move over to the sinkhole and hopefully get that taken care of. So like that?
When do you think that road would be open? Sorry?
They're going to wait until all of the underground work is done and probably the sinkhole as well.
Sinkhole too?
Yeah.
And what exactly are we doing to the sinkhole?
They're actually going to fill it in, and I don't know if there's a casing that goes in there as well, but they're, I don't know if there's a filtration strip. I know they had plans for it. So if you want to stop in my office, I can show you what the plans are for it.
Okay. And filling in, does that include like dumping big chunks of concrete or something?
Not big chunks of concrete, no.
Any other questions? Police?
The only thing to share is that we have posted the position for replacement officer.
Okay.
And we're going to be accepting applications till November thirteenth.
November thirteenth, okay. Okay. Administration?
I've handed out the budget work sheets to the department heads, and so they're supposed to be returning them to me next week, and then Nick and I'll start working on the budget. Reminder that we'll have a budget work session with the department heads on November twenty-ninth. Reminder that there's an election November seventh, and the firemen will be having their annual pancake supper that night. Friday was the deadline for Howard County Community Foundation grants, and the parks, fire, police, and library all applied for grants. So the total we asked for was thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. It used to be due in January, but they changed it, so we weren't aware of that. So it was kind of a rush deal here the last couple of weeks of getting these applications in. But we should be hearing from those pretty soon. And then I think everybody got to notice that Alliant Energy will be increasing, or they're proposing to increase their rates. Residential's are expected to go up, and what they're asking for is a two-year implementation, October of twenty-four and October of twenty-five. Residential would go up like seven point seven percent and five point seven percent. Commercial eleven and eight point nine percent. So we'll take that into account when we're doing our budgets, but it'll have quite an impact if that does get approved. So.
Okay.
And makes our three percent on our solar look pretty good when compared to what Alliant is doing.
Right. Okay, anything else? Committee updates?
I'll leave this week.
All right. Any comments from the audience?
Actually, Dave, on, oh, committee updates, I wanted to bring something up. Got the meeting minutes from the Airport Commission, and number three on the Airport Commission says that we have covered several acres and even land leased to Midwest Custom Ag for storage and staging of culverts and drain piping and other things used for the work. Who's managing any of that? If, if we're, if we're on leased land and we've got that covered in dirt, why is our airport manager not relaying that message to Nate or anyone else here on the council? That's the first I've ever heard of it. And I, I don't really appreciate having a comment that it was depressing to see the airport land in this way and wondered how and when it'll be cleaned up when no one has showed up to our meetings. Rich is, Rich talked about it, but no one from the commission has come to any of our meetings to discuss this. I think that was kind of a black eye that was put on the council and everyone by stating that type of thing.
Jerry didn't come? Okay, I mean, I was at the meeting until I see the meetings and, and it's a different issue, but I mean, I'm going to make sure that everybody gets a copy the minutes before I even remarked anything due to some comments that was made. So basically, at, two weeks ago, Jerry and I did call Nate, and we did complain about the pile. So I mean, Nate was out there, he met with us and said that something would be done about it. He would meet with, you know, W H K S was out there, and you know, Gary was out there too. So I mean, and the representative from Generation X. And basically, they, they told us they, they weren't going to move it. So I mean, there was, there was some stuff done. I mean, it wasn't Claire's fault either. I mean, stuff was being asked, but I mean, they weren't even told that it was going to be piled there. So.
And I, I went out Monday after our, after our last meeting with Scott, and I know some things that occurred, I think it was the meeting with Gen X after that fact, because at that point, Scott was still saying that they were going to level everything out and make everything the way it should be and get the right fall and everything with the land. And then obviously, something had happened after, after that. But I don't, I don't understand why I read about it in the meeting minutes versus if, if there's a problem and we have a manager to manage that, are they not able to manage it, or are they just not caring enough to do it? And then it comes to us in a meeting minute instead.
Well, I mean, I think that goes back to the project manager, how that was handled, because basically, the Airport Commission didn't even know it was going to be piled out there like that. And so when we started complaining, and then we went to Nate, and then Nate had them out there, basically, they told us at that meeting that they were not going to do anything with it, that they were going to leave the pile there. So I mean, that's the first we heard about it.
Yeah.
And that's the first time that I went to Nate and said, hey, what are we doing here? And then we met with Generation X and them, and somebody had to tell them to do that. I, that still is sitting out there in the air someplace. But I mean, it's, it's bygones, bygones now.
Yeah.
I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. But I mean, there's some stuff that probably didn't get handled right.
But if it's being insinuated that we're breaking our lease with Midwest Custom Ag?
Well, at the time, they did complain because some of that dirt was on their, their land, the land they leased.
And rightfully so. We shouldn't be doing that, but I had no idea myself.
It wasn't marked off the best, but before Midwest Ag started using it, most of the stuff that was in the way was moved, correct?
It was moved, I think, to
So they could, yeah.
Allow them, because I think they met with, with Generation X, is what I heard.
Yeah. And the piles of dirt were never brought to the attention, saying that they're on Midwest Ag's portion. It was all the pipes and the hydrants and the trailer and all that other stuff. So the dirt, I didn't, I didn't feel that that was on Midwest Ag's part, taking up any of theirs, because I know Ryan had talked, he said, we went to this limit, which it looked like this was farmed and this was not. This was grass, so we stayed off of that. So I.
My, sorry, my, my only concern is if, if we truly are on Midwest Ag's leased land, then we need to move it, we need to make it right. But it, it did not care, I mean, I had no idea on this Midwest Ag thing until I got the meeting minutes and I went, uh, wait a minute, and it's public record. So that, I mean, it gives us all a black eye, but we have no clue because we think that we're.
It, it was brought up at council meetings that, on two different occasions, and Jerry Ferry was here, we talked about it, getting stuff moved.
You might have been involved in that meeting.
There was direct contact between Gen X and the flight company. They were talking amongst themselves. Apparently, these people, from what I gathered from a meeting here that night, that they know each other and had been in communication. And we had the discussion, if it was, if it was an issue, we would take care of it. And never heard much after that. So. I mean, from what I heard with Jerry, is that we're supposed to make that up with Midwest, is what I was told. You know, what, what we took away from them. And there was flags out there. Some of that, when we went out there and walked around, the flags are there. You know, what was marked off?
But they didn't say anything on them, really. I mean, they were sticks painted with a little pink on top, right?
Well, I don't think they were going to make a big deal out of it, long as, long as the culverts and everything were moved. That was their main issue.
Yeah.
I don't think there was a huge issue with the dirt pile, was more with the, the equipment that was in the way.
But it all got moved before his season started this fall.
Well, I think, when I came in that day to tell you, I think you got to move the next couple of days, didn't you?
Yeah, it was either that afternoon or the following day.
Yeah, because I mean, I talked to him about it, and I think it was moved the next day or so.
Okay. I just, like I said.
And none of it was on his cement pad.
No, and that, that's.
Clarification that we weren't, we didn't go and pile everything on his cement that he put in.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we truly were not breaking a lease with them because that's, that doesn't look good on us or, or our community for that matter, so.
No, but there was a, you were gone that day, Jerry Ferry wasn't here that day.
Okay, okay. So.
And there was nothing on the farmland really either, correct, that needed to be addressed? So.
Well, I think that's.
We knew the farmland was going to be used.
Well, yeah, but that was from the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, what is the story on the dirt pile? I mean.
Meaning?
What's going to happen to them?
No, I sent you all an email. I don't know if you saw it with the county. I don't know when they're going to start.
Okay.
But they're going to take, they're taking as much as is useful to them. They made it sound like the vast majority if they can.
After our discussion out there that day, I seen you guys, we left, and you guys went up on the pile, walking around. Are they going to move any of that pile and level out, or is?
Which one?
We know the dirt pile's going to be used, the black dirt.
Yep.
But the big, the big fill pile there that we talked about, where we had the meeting down below with all the rocks, and you guys walked up on top and was looking around, is, is any of that pile going to be distributed out into that area and used, or?
That's the pile that I'm talking about for the county.
Correct.
Yep.
But I was, there's been, there's been two trains of thought. Originally, there was going to be no pile, and there was the discussion that, well, yeah, we're going to have a pile, we're going to use some of it. But now there's a third round that says that whole thing has got to be hauled out of there?
Oh, I don't know what, all I met with the county, and they said that they would take the vast majority, everything they can. I don't, I mean, there wasn't any agreement amongst us, I guess.
I had called Andy Lenzing, I met him on the street one day last week, and I said, hey, do you own some dirt? Because I knew we had to get rid of it. And he called, or Nick called me back the next day and said, yeah, we want to look at it. So that's when those guys went out and looked at it, and they are going to take all of it, to what it sounds, or most of it.
But getting back to Rich's original statement, he made, the guy told us that day out there that he, the guy from Gen X, the representative from Gen X said, if he knew that that pile was not, he wouldn't have put it there. He would have started spreading it out. So from day one, whether we had a gross misunderstanding or somebody didn't tell us all, that pile just went up and out. So, I mean, by his own, by his own words, as he said,
Right.
If I had known any different, I'd have done something different then. But it's too late now, so. Yeah. I mean, when he was out there, it did look good there for a while, because he basically said he wasn't moving it. So, and basically, that was between Gen X and W H K S or whatever. You know, they were going back, one was saying one thing, and the other was saying, no, he wasn't going to move it. So basically, I think, you know, between the contractor and engineering firm, there was, there was a problem.
Sure.
But I take it now, though, it's going to be down until, it won't get all out of there this year, but it'll be acceptable this year.
Yeah, they're, they're going to get a start on it. I don't know what timeframe, I have no idea. They, they didn't really give me a quantity on what they needed either, but they said they were going to start getting to it relatively shortly. They have a handful of projects that they need filled for.
Any other takers on it?
I haven't made contact with the one that we discussed.
I had talked to a guy too, and, and he thought maybe he could use up to a hundred loads, but he wasn't sure. And if the county wants it all, I'd say let them take it.
Right, as much as they possibly want.
And we don't incur any additional cost.
Correct.
In the movement of this, they want it, they load, they haul.
Correct.
They're hauling it, right?
Yep.
And I passed that, that email I passed on to the, to the Airport Commission meeting that very night. So that was acceptable.
Yeah, because I wanted to meet with the county and go out there and actually show them what we were discussing, to make sure they were on the same page, so.
But we pretty well know that land there ain't going to be very farmable. So I think, you know, they were, they were actually looking at how much would be, you know, how many acres he would actually have, because some of that's not going to be good at all.
Yeah.
For all practical purposes, everything east of the runway.
Gone.
Is done. There, and nobody is going to pay rent to plant in four inches of black soil with all that limestone there.
That's what he was paying rent on before.
Yeah.
So. All right. Any other comments on that? Questions? Comments from the audience? All right. First action item tonight on business. Angie's here from W H K S to present the proposed aging equipment replacement project for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everybody. I am here to talk about a project that you might want to consider for age-really irrequiem. A short presentation here, going to be kind of partnering, I can work with Michelle as we get into the financial elements. Yeah, maybe we'll see if we can get a little bit better lighting here for you.
Flip that microphone down, that one. Perfect, thank you.
Is that good for everybody? Yep. All right. So I'm going to cover first, real quick, of the history, how we got here, and then give you the details on which equipment needs replacement, talk about the finances and rate impacts, and then give some alternatives for next steps.
Excuse me, Angie, are you going to have a handout or something on this, or do we have to do notes?
There is no handout, no. But I would be happy to email this to you.
Wonderful.
Or I can email it to Michelle afterwards. So, okay, then I'll do that before I leave tonight. So. So, your wastewater treatment plant, the northeast of town here, was originally built in the seventies, but the main mechanical plant that's there today was built in nineteen-eighty-three, had major upgrades in two thousand one, and then oh-six and oh-seven, twenty-twelve and twenty-one. So the most recent project up there was grit handling improvements a couple of years ago. The plant is extremely well maintained. Mike and staff do a really nice job. You have pieces of equipment there that is forty years old plus running still, like old huff and blowers from the eighties and seventies plants. So really, really well-maintained facility. But when we look at equipment, we just look at, okay, where is it at now? How many times has it been in for overhaul? And how much expected lifespan do you still have in this equipment? And there does come a time when you say, okay, realistically, we're probably looking at replacing certain pieces within the next five to ten years. So when we took a look at that earlier this spring with you guys, for the purpose of that nutrient reduction study that the D N R requires, we came up with a list of equipment that looked like it likely needed to be replaced for the next ten years. And when we did that, the total was three point eight million dollars. Okay? So that's a lot of work. And that number did go to the D N R. We sent that into them when we did the nutrient reduction studies in April. We included that number in the report. And that number was part of the basis for saying to the D N R, hey, we've got enough on the plate already, just maintaining the facility and expanding it for even more stringent limits that's just not economically feasible. And then D N R did approve that report in July, so that's on the books. So since then, there came up a funding opportunity, potentially some loan forgiveness through state revolving fund. And so Michelle and Nate and Mike and myself, we've been working on kind of honing in the list of more urgent equipment replacement needs, and come up with the following list of items that realistically, we think, needs to be done within the zero-to-five-year timeframe. Okay? So this is a subset of the larger list that went to the D N R. And the list of equipment is on the slide here. We've got collection system, lift station controls, the group receiving pad, channel modifications, non-podable water system, air piping replacement, digester building overhaul, sludge digester piping, valve replacements, screw pump, the top bearing, painting, and rehabilitation are all part of the screw pump, U V disinfection controller, and final clarifier equipment rehab. And I'm going through those very quickly, but just to give you an overview, these are the pieces of equipment that we'll be talking about. And then I'm going to go show you an image of each one as we go through here. So first off, the lift station controls. The city owns and operates five lift stations around town, and they're reaching that point where there's a stable of replacement parts, but it's starting to make more sense to just replace them all, both of their own kind. And so among the five lift stations, there's two that are potentially more urgent, that might be maintenance budget items, and then the other three potentially could be pushed off to a year later and be part of this project. The, the idea with this would be probably sourced from electric pumps, since that's who's supplying the existing controls and pumps for you for many years, but bringing in new control panels and float alarms at the lift stations around town to upgrade and improve those. The second one, potentially a grit receiving pad. So this photo is your pre-treatment at the wastewater treatment plant that has a grit handling equipment there right now. And the idea here would be improve it to bring in a pad, maybe some knee walls, so that you could bring in your own grit from sewer cleaning and process it here as well. This would be in addition, instead of a maintenance item, but it fits into the overall collection system, operations and maintenances, and fills the need that's currently there. Next thing, influence channel modifications. So this is at the plant, just up behind the building, after the screw pumps. There is a channel here, and this is a pretty straightforward item, just because of the size that it was cast in the eighties. It's a little bit oversized, and so grit tends to accumulate here. So the, the modification here would be to just kind of narrow up the channel in parts, so that you still get the water through that you need, but decrease the amount of grit that hangs up. Okay, air piping repair. So I threw in an aerial photo of the plant, and there is potentially one location where the air piping, which is the piping that brings air from your blowers over to the activated sledge basins, which is that double rectangular area, and that, there's potentially a damaged part of that piping where it has been maybe crushed down. And so just on the south side of the basins there, we'll be digging down to repair that piece of pipe. Final clarifier equipment rehab, so three final clarifiers. And inside each one is a set of equipment that basically serves to collect and concentrate the sludge and return it back into the system. And there's many pieces of that equipment. The central part of that, the heart of it, really, is the central drive, the motorized mechanism that goes around, and then the arms that sweep around. And a lot of the equipment is in really good shape above water, so this rehab is really just focusing on the drive and transmission mechanisms for all three clarifiers. Basically, taking those out, rehabilitating them, putting new sheet metal on, and putting them back in, as opposed to brand-new equipment at triple the cost. Non-podable water system repair. So this is in the basement of the plant building. I want to start with this picture to show you how nicely we got all painted up. Mike's done a fantastic job. Everything's orderly there. And then in the far back, you can kind of see the pneumatic tank and compressors, which is part of the non-podable system. That's the last bit of the basement equipment that is leftover from the eighties, and it's time. There's a close-up picture of the non-podable water system. So what that does is it takes plant water and recycles it for the plant's own use, cleaning off equipment and feeding the jets and whatnot. Okay. Next item, screw pump, bearing, painting, and rehabilitation. These are straightforward maintenance items. We've got the large screw pumps that feed the entire plant. They come in, take them up with a crane, replace the bearings, repaint them, and re-mortar the channel, make sure those stay in good service. These are the ones that got put in in two thousand one. Next one is digester piping and valve replacement. This is a picture that's taken inside the digester building. So this is sludge that's getting digested before it's stored and then landed by. So it's on the back end of the treatment sequence. There are valves that introduce air into the sludge, and you can see two of them in the portion of the image that's visible on the left, they're coming down off the walkway and down into the liquid. So those are froze up and not quite sealable, so this would be just a straight-up replacement of those pieces of equipment. The building itself that's over the digester, this has been an item that's been hanging out there for a while. We've talked about it before. It's a very aggressive environment for metal to exist in. It's constantly humid, and the paint is just flaking off. You know, it's rusting on the exposed members there. And so we talked through this with Mike, and really, what staff needs here is a shelter, like a roof, but not necessarily an enclosure for being able to get out here and operate this during the winter. So talking about potentially taking this building down, demolishing it, and replacing it with a kind of canopy, if you will. So a roof and partial walls, but gets much more airflow in here, hopefully a little bit more longevity. So all told, those items, from our cost opinion, as of this spring, subtotal one point two million. Then although we think that inflation has kind of tapered off to be at least steady, it's reached a new norm. We did include thirty percent contingencies on top of that number, and then you have design observation. So total cost for those improvements, one point nine million. And it's a big number.
When you take something like that out to bid, there's typically one company that could do all of it?
There are several companies that would serve as general contractors that, that work in the area. And then I think certain pieces of it would definitely be subcontracted.
Subcontracted.
Yeah, so.
The one point nine, that's, that's the price today. What would it be in five years?
So we are going back to using three percent for future planning. You know, after this tremendous increase that we saw over the past two years in, in costs, where things basically are a time and a half to double what they had been pre-COVID, it's tapering off now. We're back to using three percent. So three percent over the next five years, is that another fifteen, twenty percent? Okay. So there are finance options. What we've been looking at is the state revolving fund. That is a low-interest loan that the state administrators, you're able to apply for it and get on the intended use plan, and then pay it back over a period of years. Now, the new thing that has come out is some stimulus funding that is called the bill grant, but that might need some free money. Okay? So potentially, I want to highlight, potentially, there is the potential for up to forty percent loan forgiveness, or up to one million dollars loan forgiveness for S R F loans that are entered into contract. So bid and award to a contractor by the end of fiscal year twenty-five. Okay? So there's a time aspect to that that brought this whole conversation forward to right now. And the con, the difficulty is, there's no guarantee on how much loan forgiveness the state will give until it goes to bid and you're actually ready to award it to a contractor. So they're very much in the position of first come, first served, and they'll try, they say, to distribute it as much as possible, but they won't make any commitments right now today telling you how much you think, they think they might be able to give you. So that up to forty percent is based on socioeconomic factors and the type of project, according to S R F's scorecard, if you will, that they've given out. It'll be somewhere between zero and forty percent.
There's no federal money involved? This is just state fund?
That is, the federal money would be the loan forgiveness.
That's the federal part.
That's the federal part, that's right.
I had a question on one thing, is, you know, talking about, you know, security and everything around sewer area, sewer plants and water plants, not building something that's fully, you know, secured or enclosed would be okay?
So enclosed in what way would you?
I think he's talking about the digester building.
Oh, oh, okay.
Right, is that what you mean?
That makes sense to me, yeah. So there's a fence around the entire perimeter of the wastewater plant that is locked when, when it's not being stopped. And many of the operational tanks are open air, so all the activated sludge is open air, the clarifiers are open air. So that itself is not abnormal at all. In fact, that used to be open air when it was built originally, and then they put a building over it, I think in the eighties.
So it's just the digester building, or the control building would still be all enclosed, so.
Pretty much all the sewer plants have a fence around them these days and locked up?
A blue cell.
Yeah.
That's all part of that nature, yeah.
I think that building has been on our to-do list since I got on the council in two thousand ten, and it looked, it looked horrible then, and it looks horrible now.
It's out there, it's a, it's a big item.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But it's certainly time to do something about it.
Agreed. So the shell of the building, agreed, has, has looked poorly. So the things that have, I think, gotten a little bit worse in the last decade or so, the handrails that protect. so, the handrails that protect the front, when you're on the walkway, walking around the tanks, a couple of those handrails have actually become very rusted. So, and the valves, that needs to be replaced. So there are pieces that are really urgent, and then the bigger picture of building is, you know, again, one of those things, when do you do it?
But we have been putting it off for quite a while.
Yeah, agreed. So I think Michelle had some things on the finance end of things.
So I reached out to Piper Sandler, our financial advisor, and talked to him about this. He just closed on a loan that a city had done for like $580,000, and they got a 75% loan forgiveness on their project.
Wow.
It was a small town, so they probably had low income and different qualifications. There's a whole list of qualifications for what percentage you'll get. The bad news was that 2% loan that they always had, because of interest rate hikes, they are now at 3.09%. And they're looking at it about quarterly, so that rate could be even higher by the time we would get to that point. But right as of today, it's at 3.09. So he ran numbers, calculated over a 20-year payback, and then looked at our profit. So with the SRF loan, one of the caveats is that you have to budget your operating profit to be 110% of your principal and interest payment every year. So he's estimating the payment to be around $130,000 if we don't get any loan forgiveness. Because the bad part with this whole thing is we don't know until we're gone out for bid whether we're going to get any funding. So we have to prepare ourselves in case no loan forgiveness is done. So that was the initial number, was about $130,000 per year for 20 years. Would say that we'd have to do at least a 3% rate increase just to cover the loan payment. So you'd probably be looking at like a 3% to 5% if you're going to be funding any capital improvements, like we usually do every year. So it wasn't a terrible increase. We do have an outstanding SRF loan that will expire in 2031. So he said we could structure the payments so that they're a tad bit lower until 2031, and then increase them if we wanted to. So there's a lot of fluctuation in how you, we could set up the repayment plan. If we were to get about a 40% loan forgiveness, that could be $800,000. That could be free money for us, because we know we're going to have to replace all this eventually. Do we try for it and, you know, attempt to go for this possible $800,000 loan forgiveness? Again, bad news, first come, first served. So if we wait too long, will the money all be spoken for by the time we apply? Or they start getting low, and then they get stringent with it? Once they tell us how much is forgivable in loans, then we get the choice of how we want to apply that loan forgiveness. So you could either take it off the principal and have a lower payment. So instead of $130,000, you'd have a $75,000 annual payment for 20 years. Or if we can afford that annual payment, you could reduce the time on it, and you'll do a seven-year loan, 10-year loan instead. So it's totally up to the council at the time that we want to fund it, and you can do some combinations. So at least you've got the control over that part of it, of how you want to apply it.
And what point do you find out if you qualify for the loan forgiveness?
After you bid it and are ready to award it to the contractor.
So before we award it, you would know, or after we award it?
I think you'd be able to know before you award it, yes.
What kind of timing are we talking about now?
So it's, it'll be a process. Oh, I left out. Turning back to Angie.
Gracie, yeah. So yeah, alternative one, if you wanted to begin, you could begin design and begin the application process, and that would basically start now and go six to nine months. So that gets you halfway through next year. Then you would bid it, decide whether to award it based on how much grant available is being awarded, and then you could start construction fall next year, probably wrapping up, you know, June of '25-ish.
Two questions. The first is, boy, that seems like a long time to do the design. What is so difficult about this?
So I love that question. That is driven by the SRF application process to go through the steps, because they take applications quarterly, and we have to go through a project initiation process. We'd be doing that in parallel with the design, but that would take six to nine months itself.
Oh, okay. Second question is, I noticed you carefully said that there was a 10-year plan, but we're only talking about the first five years. What's in the second five years that we could get into this?
The remainder of that 3.8 million were all projects that, over discussions over the past couple of months, decided were not as need pressing, and took them out. And I think that that maybe came down to doing some strategy, if there were no loan forgiveness, how big a project could potentially, you know, you move forward with if it was 100% city-funded.
So there's another $1.9 million projects out there?
Yes.
And that's, would this be all of the nutrient reduction part, or nothing to do with that?
It would have nothing to do with the nutrient reduction. This is straight up age-related equipment to keep the plant functioning in its current way.
So the fact that you, I noticed you carefully said the DNR accepted the report that you sent in. What exactly does that mean in terms of the?
So when we sent in that report, we identified that $3.8 million of age-related equipment that needed to be done, and then noted that to upgrade the plant for nutrient reduction would be another $11 to $13 million, and that would cause too much of a burden for the sewer rate payers, because there was not any economically feasible alternative to upgrade for nutrient reduction. And so when they approved the report, they agreed that there's no economically feasible alternative for nutrient reduction.
So at the moment, and I'm not saying forever, but for the moment, the nutrient reduction changes are off the table?
For the next five years. That's correct. So we have to do it for every five years as per the plant's permit, looking at it fresh.
Define the nutrient reduction. What's the definition of nutrient reduction?
That would be taking additional nitrogen and phosphorus out of the waste stream at the plant by adding more equipment, more processes.
Out of city runoff?
Out of city point source.
City point source.
Not runoff.
Our sewer plant.
It's sewer, yeah. It's the stuff coming off our streets, off our yards.
No, no.
Sanitary sewer.
Sanitary sewer.
Our stormwater is separated.
Yeah, excuse me, my bad. But nutrient reduction out of sewer water.
Just like, just like the bio-reactor that I have on my front to reduce the nitrogen, except you have to do phosphorus also for the city.
And that's, that initiative was through the state DNR, or is that the federal DNR?
So that, I believe stemmed from EPA in 2009, which, because of the Gulf Pipe Act, sued all of the 12 states in the Mississippi River Basin. And then the way that EPA is set up, legally speaking, it then pushed the enforcement of how to get extra phosphorus control to each state's regulatory agency. And in Iowa, it's the Iowa DNR that's responsible for that.
So they're driving it technically?
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, Iowa State came out with a nutrient reduction strategy, kind of similar timeframe, 2010-ish, identified the sources.
Right.
And, yeah.
And just to comment, if I recall correctly, the nutrient reduction study found that 16% of the nutrient flow into the Mississippi was from point sources, meaning industry and sewer plants and things like that. And 84% is from non-point sources, meaning roughly farmland. And there's no mandatory reduction in the 84%, just the 16%.
I think you correctly stated.
Just a little bent out of shape about that.
Keep our true feelings to ourselves about some of that, boy.
So as far as this, then, it's kind of in our hands to determine what we want to do?
Correct, yeah. So I think you could move forward with the project and kind of roll the dice on the financing a bit, or could use to delay it and pick it up within the next 10 years, essentially.
It's not life or death today, correct?
No, it's not life or death today.
Yeah.
Why would we go ahead with the chance of getting up to that?
It would be a no-brainer not to.
Right.
It would be nice to have a little bit more guarantee going into this, rather than you go up to the aisle and boom, you're out.
And that's every city, so.
So if we find out, so if we go to bid and then find out it's going to cost $2 million, let's say, and then we find out from the state we don't qualify for any of that, do we have to do the project?
I think you always reserve the right not to award the contract after the bid's gone. You can accept the bids and then table it.
By the time that we don't reward it, then something happens.
Yeah. I mean, it's not like the equipment's going to get any younger or less rusted.
Right. That's just it.
Okay.
It's there.
Yeah. Any other questions, or do you have more info for us?
I do not, so, yeah.
You're going to send that to Michelle, and thank you for that out.
So do you guys want to think about it before we talk about going forward?
I think we should.
Kind of maybe talk about a little bit with the CIP, and then the next step will be giving WHCAST that would go ahead to start working.
I was surprised when you said only a 3% increase. Were you just a 3% increase in the sewer rates? I was expecting something much bigger.
I calculated 17%, so.
How did you get to 3% then?
A lot of what he did was he took out capital improvements out of my operating. So like when CIT comes in and they find these critical repairs, and then any sliplining and all that stuff, he's removing that from our regular operating income, which inflates our profit. So it's still an expense to us, but it's more of a capital. So you can, you can take out of your operating profit calculation anything that's like a depreciable asset. As cash basis, we don't depreciate things, but, so your major equipment and sewer mades and that kinds of stuff, you'd be able to remove that. So my operating profit was much higher than I had initially calculated, so. And that's only our required amount to meet their 110%.
But that's kind of, now you've said something that sounds kind of like we're playing with numbers, because no matter which bucket we put it in, we've still got to cover that.
So what he's talking is our requirement to meet the 110%. What you guys will budget and what you'll actually do is going to take into account those capital expenses, so cash flow more. So that 3% to 5% is going to be your base just for the loan part of it. Anything extra is part of the budget.
Which we always want to do.
Will be on top of that 3% to 5%.
Which we always want to do. So you're talking more 17%? Okay, that sounds a little more like what I was expecting.
And I was doing it over a 10-year amortization. He thought we should do a 20-year. When she's talking, this equipment has lasted 40 to 50 years. In my head, I was just thinking equipment should be amortized over 10 years. But the equipment that we're talking about is 40-year equipment, so then you could amortize it over 20 years and justify.
Done a good job of keeping it up.
Yeah, Mike's done super. I, I mean, I guess I really, the chance of getting that 40% is very attractive. So, and we're going to talk about the CIP soon, but it would take a lot to get me off of going ahead on this.
It would do what now?
It would take a lot to get me off of not.
Oh, I think, I think it should be moved ahead.
I mean, the sooner that we make the decision, the sooner we start the process. I mean, if you feel comfortable in making a motion, you could tonight, just, basically it's just a motion to write up an agreement with WHCAST to start the project. So if you feel comfortable.
Going forward, contingent on the fact that we get the forgivable loan, correct?
Well, going. You have to go all the way to the bidding process.
Go all the way to the.
You're going to have money into it, I guess.
But we can roll it, we don't have to award it if we don't think.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So I think, I would make that motion.
I would take my second.
Who knows, by then there might be more money freed up.
So the motion then is to move forward, drawing up the agreement with WHCAST, correct?
That would be the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And Buska second.
Just one question before we get to, what of our engineering fees? We're still going to incur engineering fees regardless of what. What are we looking at number-wise there?
For the design, I think we drafted up a number of about $190,000.
$180,000?
Mm-hmm.
So right, wrong, or indifferent, we're on the hook to you guys for $180,000 whether we go forward with this project or not?
And then you would have plans and specs for the equipment replacement on the shelf.
Correct. So then you'd be able to use those if you wanted to piecemeal it and do two of the projects? We'd have the specs already written up for it.
And that's due and payable when?
As you go. So over the next six to nine months, typically being invoiced hourly.
What is your hourly rate?
Average, we have multiple staff members, so we're looking at probably $120,000 to $15,000.
We're looking, we're looking at free money, but we're talking $180,000 whether this project goes forward or not. Yeah, the plans are there, the plans are drawn up. Just saying. I mean, do we need to have a little more discussion about where we go with this?
That's up to you.
Well.
But I heard you're saying, yes.
$180,000, $180,000.
Does it help, we do have 1.8 million in our sewer fund reserves right now, as of today?
How much?
1.8 million.
So would there be a cost to draw up the agreement that we're talking about?
Um, no. We do not, no.
And that would spell everything out.
Correct.
So when this, when you guys did this tour through the sewer facility, who was in on the decision-making, and was Mike involved heavily in this? Were you involved, Nate? There was.
I wasn't there for the tour because I was busy with the projects, but Mike's been heavily involved with all of this.
So this is, the things that you showed us tonight have Mike's blessing, obviously.
Yeah, we made sure that we talked to Mike before we even told Angie to go ahead with preparing this presentation for you guys.
And we sat down and crossed out things that we had identified, things that, and some of the items that we crossed out were actually because they're too important and we can't wait for two years to get them done. And some of the items were like, this is not that important, we can push it off. So with $1 million being the maximum loan forgiveness, it seems kind of silly to go out and try to do $4 million right now, because you're not going to get that much forgiveness. So we really narrowed it down to what we felt was the most important. And, I mean, that was basically Mike.
This would be on his list of.
This is Mike's list.
This was his list for the, coming up here in November.
Yep.
Correct.
So again, what we're asking her to do now isn't going to cost anything, right, Angie, you said? And then that will spell out costs on your end moving forward.
Okay. I still don't, I'm not changed.
So you motion still?
Yeah.
And second, any other questions? Gary?
No.
Alex? So the motion's been made and seconded?
Roll call, Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I'll get that presentation emailed tonight.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Next is resolution authorizing the city clerk to sign the health and dental insurance contract with Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. You want to give us a little update on that, Michelle?
And we were completely shocked that it was a 0% increase for basically the same as our coverage. So we, in my budget, we had done a 15% increase, so this will give us a little cushion in our budget.
So all the numbers for the employees stay the same?
Mm-hmm.
And what we pay stays the same?
And we did open it up to all the employees, because part of the union contract says that before you enter into a contract, that insurance committee could meet and discuss if they had issues. So we handed it out to all full-time employees and said, by noon today, contact us. And none of the employees came forward, so.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes, McCallum.
Yes.
Number three, resolution approving change order number two for the 500,000 gallon water tower rehab project. Do you want to give us a little update on that, Tim?
Yeah, I believe that's the zero cost to us. It was, they ordered the wrong, the fall protection equipment that I said that we're waiting on. They ordered the wrong one of that, so they had to reorder it. And I believe they're going either stainless or aluminum. I don't know which one. Aluminum now, so, yeah, it wasn't going to be stainless. Our engineers approved the aluminum to be just fine, so we're just waiting for that delivery.
Does that have to be in place before these people start installing all these microwaves and radars and towers?
I, I would like to see that, but I know there's, the guys are starting to push a little bit to get their equipment installed back on there, but Tim's handling all those guys with that, so. He's fully aware, he's the one that approved them to go to the aluminum rather than the stainless for that fall protection, so he's on board with where everything's at.
All right.
I would like to see it installed before they do that, but I just don't know if it's.
As long as he's signing off and he's saying he's responsible for who's up there and.
Right.
And, you know, and these things, when they open it up, it's going to be the Wild West up there.
Yeah, because I know I've, I forwarded contact information from the people who have equipment up there to Tim, so he's taking care of it from there.
And they will have an observer there when that individual is, is putting that stuff up, there will be somebody from Dixon overseeing that installation.
Correct.
They'll inspect it afterwards.
They're, they're going to be there the day of.
Will they be there the day of?
From what, from Tim tells me, they'll be there the day of to make sure that it's installed per what they agreed upon.
Yeah, because my concern is, is that metal on metal contact.
Yep.
So.
Be good for the local newspaper to go up there and take pictures too.
Well, I think Dixon has a drone if anybody wants, because they sent me some drone pictures.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
McCallum?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.
Number four, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a water tower space lease agreement with Upper Iowa Communications.
So moved, seconded.
I, I'm not so sure I really like the, the term about 3% increase for electricity. And that rate class alliance says the rates are going up 17.4% over two years. And I'm not even sure if that's exactly correct because a friend of mine in Decor is looking at it, and the way they're changing it is they're doing away with tiers. So electricity doesn't get cheaper as you use more of it, it stays the same. And they're changing the winter summer differential and they're changing the meter charge and at least one piece of that's going up 87%. So 3% just doesn't seem like, I think we're going to be behind. Historically, in that rate class, the city's annual increase has been between 5% and 7% since like 2010, I think, I can't remember exactly when I calculated it. 3% just seems really low.
What did the line tell us just a little bit ago?
Yeah, what was it?
Alliance said 17.4% over two years.
Okay.
How do you differentiate what this individual uses for electricity or is it just lumped in?
Yeah, you can't.
So we have no idea how much electricity they're using?
Yeah, I mean, all you can say is that.
Super, you're going with this, yeah, that could be a losing proposition.
I think it's a given, it's a losing proposition.
What would you recommend?
I would want to see 5%. We don't have any solar up there, so it's pure alliance rates. And they couldn't complain that 5% was gouging them in any way, and we'd probably lose a little, but not much, would be my guess.
It's not a profit maker for the city anyway. It's a courtesy move is what it is, I mean.
So the other people that have leases up there, what are theirs, do theirs say?
I believe they're all 3%.
Yeah, I was making them all, the agreement say the same, so. So this one I think was going to start now.
We can do it as a nonprofit thing, but we should just know we're going to lose money.
Maybe as each one comes to their renewal time, then we look at increasing the rate? And we could maybe talk about the rent too, because I think those pulled out of the sky for, you know, whether it's reasonable or not, so maybe we look at their whole rate schedule as each one comes due. I kind of feel like, I hate to do too much raises right now because we've kind of made their life very difficult the last two months.
But then again, at the same time, I mean, we're a public facility. I mean, that tower there for the taxpayers and, and the water use, I mean, putting all this stuff on top of it, that's a courtesy on our part. I mean, and if we, if we compare our rates with other cities, do we, have we ever looked at that or has Dixon given us any insight? What are they doing in other cities as far as charges for that?
Probably never asked.
Really, it's a courtesy to our residents because they're the ones that are using the services of the people that are on the tower. I'm, because isn't my broadband's up there?
Mm-hmm. And LTD broadband, so they're both internet services for.
Yeah, LTD broadband, so.
Where have all these people gone now for the last four months?
They put up a temporary.
I know my broadband did. Where's LTD, where they go, where, where the other tower?
I know they have equipment on our other tower, but I, I have no idea what they did with their equipment from there. Not, I have no idea.
That is a good point though on the 3%, I guess.
How long is this duration of this contract, just one year?
I'd likely renew it each year, so we could open it up.
Next year?
They all like expired at different times, but it got too hard for me to get it, the expiration time at the same. So this will be the only one I think that's starting over now in October.
So I mean, really don't, we really don't know if 3% is enough, but.
And they'll be.
Well, historically, it's not enough.
Okay.
But, I mean, the other, I think it's a question of do we want to view it as a service to our residents, which it really is? Or do we want to get closer to covering our costs?
Right. I think we have to do both.
I'll see what total electric expense is for that water tower compared to what our revenue is. I mean, I honestly don't think they're using much electricity, but.
No, that, I, I don't monitor that neither, but I know it's not huge.
Right, that's what I'm thinking too, so. But at least then we can look at it and see if we're.
Go with that 5% number then and.
So you're going to approve tonight that, what we have or wait? Or make it a different percentage?
Well, if it's 5%, I mean, 3% is in the contract. Then when do we have to have this approved, by the end of the month?
I think that's when.
It's due, right?
I was gonna.
It says, well.
I worked on three different ones, I can't.
October 31st.
Was it October 31st? Okay.
So we won't meet again?
We won't.
Or another option is to say 3%, but first you have to give us the 17.4% that Alliance is saying that they're going to take in the next two years. I mean, because that's a given, they've already promulgated the rate increase. I mean, it's not approved.
I U B hasn't approved it, so that could be there.
So I mean, it could be less.
And that doesn't go into effect October of 2024, so.
Or give us 10% of, because last time, Mid-American rate increase, I think it was 60% of rate requested was approved. So of a 17.4, that would be roughly 10%, wouldn't it, something like that?
How do you determine electrical use for the other customers? I mean, how many people up there actually that operate off the top of that tower in that little blue building have equipment in there? They all drawing electricity out of that building and?
They're all plugged in the same meter, so.
Right, so it's all shared. But with that equipment.
But they're giving us a preset amount of money every year for electricity for that.
Is that covering the cost combined?
They all have a 3% increase in, in all three contracts.
And that 3% was figured before this come out from Alliance that we're going to be taking these, these hits?
Yeah, I think the 3% has been in the sense that establishment of these contracts.
This was first done back in the 1990s or whenever it was. I mean, what we could look is see, it's pretty straightforward to determine exactly what the electric usage is at that meter. As I say, I just don't keep a spreadsheet of it.
Yeah.
Like I do some of the others, but.
We'd have to go back to May and before that.
Yeah, we'd have to go back a year to see what the usage is. I think it's.
I just don't think it's material, but that's my opinion.
Or we could do 3%. I just wanted to make sure we discuss it.
Sure.
Because they're paying us $20 a month, that'll pay at least the meter charge. Meter charge is going to be something on the, it was around $20 up there. So that's one way to look at it.
Something has to be approved tonight.
And if we approve, whatever we approve tonight, we can change in a year, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So at least we'd have a, we know we'd have a year's data.
Right. We'll do some research and then, you know, put on the calendar for next August to look at it.
At 3% or 5%?
And talk at the rent and talk at the, with the electricity and what the rent is and.
Whatever the rate is going up, then we go with that.
Then we should know.
I would be good with that.
Okay.
So go with the 3% now?
What's in the contract?
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Then do you want to second or?
I guess, yeah, Gary didn't make.
I mean, you need to.
Sorry. Let's get it, move on. Second it, and then we reevaluate this in a year in August. See if we can't put better numbers together than what we've done the last few years.
Well, do we need to look at those other contracts to see when they expire first? Because.
Because the one's like in preparation, so we would look at that one before, so we'll, we'll start working on it now and then be prepared before the next.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Kriener?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Buska?
Okay.
And Fortune?
Yes.
Number five, discuss, discussion on flower and statue pedestals on North Allen there.
Feedback?
Um, most of the feedback is they don't like them, from what I've understood.
Because they're what, too high or?
Yeah, and, yeah, I would say that's the case.
I mean, I walked uptown today.
My biggest thing is, it's something new. I don't know if it'll get better with time, I, I have no idea. I mean, we have the planners out on the raised ones. The rest of the statues and planners will go out this week as well, so.
Is it the platform or it's the statues itself?
No, it's, it's not, it's not the statues or the pots, it's just the flat raised platform for them, so, yeah. Because otherwise they'd be sitting on a severe slope, right? And it's just in the block from Second Avenue up to Third Avenue on the west side. There's one more kind of right up the alley here in front of the new chiropractor, but that one's just a square big enough for those pots to fit on, so you, you can't even notice it, so.
And they varied by elevation of existing.
Correct.
Buildings, basically, yeah.
So how many is that if we had to?
I think there's six.
Five or six, yeah.
And that's, how much was it to?
If we wanted to take them out and replace them with, with like cement, I think about a thousand bucks each.
$6,000?
Yeah.
And it would please everybody?
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't heard any comments in favor of them saying they appreciate them, I know they do collect a bunch of leaves, as you've seen down there, kind of in front of Bill Myers and whatnot, but I've heard anything in favor of them.
The biggest issue is going to be moving snow off from around them probably there as you hit them.
Well, yeah, the only, the only thing, I mean, you can shovel right beside them and it'd be pretty simple, it's just, I know they like to keep a clean pass every time and push it all toward the street, but, yeah.
But, but I mean, the option is, the planters are going to sit like this.
Unless, unless you get rid of the plants.
I say if you take the pedestal out, you take the planters.
Right, that's, that would be, that would be my suggestion as well. The, if the raised platform goes, the planters go. Because I don't want planters sitting up there on an angle.
And the statues would stay?
There's no statues in that section except for in front of Loupolds, which that doesn't have a raised platform.
But we have had planters there before.
All along that line, yep, in each location that they're currently at.
Well, leave them in place, see what, what happens down the road. I'm, the cost to take them out is not going to get higher in six months or a year from now, I mean.
Yeah, and each one of those platforms is pretty much its own piece.
Yes.
So it, I don't think it's going to be any too difficult to replace them, if that's what you guys decide you want to do in the future, so.
I mean, the only suggestion I might have would be, right now, if I recall, the planters are kind of.
They're pushed to the back.
Pushed to the, it would be to spread them out a little.
Yep.
To make sure that people visually see that the whole length of it is there.
Well, and the reason we push them to the back is because it's like if you're walking, you're going to notice the planters there, so you're going to see something. Most of them have a raised edge that's eight to 10 inches tall, you'd think more people would be able to see that.
I think they look fine.
You did set it up with the striping so that the front of the car is in the middle of that platform, so a door can't swing into it.
Correct, yep, yep.
Did you want to say something, Dan, or were you not, no?
I, I actually like the way they look, it, it just, people are tripping off.
Right.
That's, that's the only problem. And I, the only, the only answer you could do is have something that covers the entire platform, and I don't know what the answer is on that.
Or do they not, what is it?
If you do put the statues up, you know, that, that are supposed to go, go there, maybe that won't be enough, you know, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the only issue is there's, there's no statues in the rest of that block except for in front of Loupolds.
There is nothing right now, yeah.
So it's just around flower pots that go on top of them?
Correct, yep.
And there's their three pots in each group?
Correct, yep.
And they could be spread out?
They've talked about putting them in a line, I'm just, I mean, we can definitely move the pots around and make, or see what it looks like.
Those, those pots are kind of a chamber project, is that right?
I believe so, I'm not 100% certain on that.
Downtown business committee would be my guess.
Okay.
It is the business committee. But, you know, I mean, there might be something that they can look at to possibly fill those up more, you know, too, so, you know, and especially if there's only six.
But we've had no formal complaints, we've had nobody come and say, I want it out of the front of my building at this point?
Uh, there was one, but we shifted it to where originally was, so then they defined it.
That was before we put it in the platform, so.
Yep, they had it framed up, uh, building down from where it originally was, so I made them move it back to.
No feedback from the chamber on this?
I haven't heard anything.
I, I talked to Roy too, and he, he liked the way it looked too, I, you know, I mean, a lot of everybody kind of likes the way it looks, just they're all worried about people tripping.
Correct, yeah, and that's the biggest, that's the biggest thing, because I know.
Especially in front of your building.
Yeah, right, I was saying, I know it's happened.
If, if we're going to live under that, then we'd have to take out every stop sign, every street lamp, everything on that sidewalk.
And just so you don't notice it when you're walking sometimes, you know, because the one, like even the one in front of us, it, it extends out so far and, and it's kind of lit all the way through it, you know, and if you're walking and you're kind of looking around, all of a sudden you, you know, I can, I can see where it could be a problem. And I, I did it myself, so, you know, I didn't fall, thank goodness, but, but there was a I did it myself, so. I didn't fall, thank goodness, but, but there was a guy that actually fell today in front of Harvard, so.
Today?
Yeah, today.
Would it be terrible to paint the?
It's brain to concrete.
End of it? I know, you would hate to.
Painting going to solve the problems.
Yeah. I mean, it might bring attention to.
I thought about that when I walked, but I mean, no.
I think the realtor's going to be snow when it's not exactly cleaned off and people don't see it, especially like in front of the post office.
I mean, if you put a planter box the whole length of that platform, that would solve it.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they want to do something different with their flower pots, by all means, I mean.
But those would be kind of permanent then, those, you know?
Kind of expensive.
And they would probably pile snow up behind them when the wind blows and stuff too, but, I mean, we can talk to the chamber about it. I guess Jan goes to the chamber meetings. Do you go to them, Rich, or no? And has there been much discussion there?
No.
Because I mean, ultimately, it's for their flower plants too, so, or pots.
And there have been no complaints at a chamber meeting? What was the last meeting you had?
Last month.
I think that we need more information at this point.
Or to tear them out.
I think that the chamber, the store members need to get, you know, and if, if it comes back and it's a unanimous decision that they want them gone, then so be it.
Right.
I mean, I like the aesthetics. I like the looks of it.
Yeah.
But. It'd be nice if it would be, like you said, like a box over the whole thing.
Yeah, and I believe a lot of the thought process behind those was to keep people from walking on that, that sloped portion of the sidewalk as well. Walking, you know, down the sidewalk. Because technically, I mean, it's part of the sidewalk, so you can walk on it. That's, that's totally fine. But there was, part, part of that was, I know, brought up to keep people, try to keep people up on the walking path part of it.
But it's new too. It's.
Right.
Until they're used to it.
I agree. And I like the slope too. I mean, that's going to make it a lot easier to shovel snows.
Yeah, if it snows. Any other comments or questions? Should we bring it up again next month? Is that fair? Next meeting?
Gives us time to get a little more positive, or feedback.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, one way or the other.
Yeah, okay. Number six, final item, discuss the capital improvement plan. Michelle sent us out some papers from the last time.
I don't know that it's really necessary to have a work session and talk about every single project. I just added, basically at the end of, you can kind of see where the new projects were added at the end. We're not redoing the whole CIP, the capital improvement plan. All we're doing is changing the addendum. Basically, the addendum is identifying the projects and when we want to do them. So when you're doing your council ranking, remember that you're picking what time slot, not do you think this is an important project or not. At the back, it tells you what the ranking codes are. So a four means that you think it needs to be done within the next two years, whereas like a one means, oh, this could wait for seven years or longer.
And then nothing means remove it.
And if you put a zero in there, then you think it should be removed from the plan. So then what I'll do is I'll take your six responses and then I compile them all. And then we kind of look at where we think the most important things are. And then we turn around and the items that are the highest priority, then that'll help us when we're doing our budget here into next month.
So do you need these back by when?
I was hoping by like next Friday.
It's coming or two weeks?
I was thinking this Friday, but.
This Friday?
Whenever it works. I mean, I just, I have to throw out a deadline because if you're all like me, you put it aside and you kind of almost forget about it. So I just thought, that's why I gave you last time, so you could kind of see the overall council ranking.
So where's that sewer project would be on you, right?
It's number 14.
14?
Uh, no, that's, that's the big nutrient reduction.
Oh, oh, okay. There's like digester blowers, number 56?
So those are things that were not included in this.
I don't remember seeing them on there, but.
So it's number 50.
50 would be that one?
Yep.
So I mean, in essence, we'd be already putting that as a four.
Right.
Since we've already.
Right.
For now, yeah.
So I, I also sent you out project sheets. So the number way on the left-hand side just corresponds to which project sheet it corresponds to. So hopefully you can find more description on there. Street projects and stuff like that. Nate has done maps for those. You can see exactly where we're talking. Most of this stuff is carried forward from prior year.
When was the first year we did this? About 18 or 19?
Two years ago. This is our.
Oh, just two years ago?
This is our third year of doing it.
Okay.
2021 was our first.
Okay.
So from item number 46 on down is, are the new ones, which I guess 46, that airport runway, was on there last time. I just updated the dollar amounts.
That's going to be a different amount though, if they're just doing the.
No, they're talking about possibly just doing some repairs, so.
Right, that would be the $100,000 or something like that, which they have in there. I'm just looking for, where is this on the Fettner Center for the pool that?
So that's a, that's a difficult one. There's the pool.
Heat is 23.
It was number 26.
23, you're saying? Yeah. And 25, right?
That's part of it, but 26 is kind of the big.
3.2.
Right. But that was when we were basically refurbishing the pool and stuff. It's kind of changed direction now. I have not, I did not get a new project sheet, so I just left that 3.2 million in there. Them tearing down the building and building a brand new one, I don't know what number to put. I, I just didn't have anything, so it's kind of number 26, but kind of not.
No, I'm not talking about the one that, I think it's 23 and 25.
So replacing the pool heater, number 23, I believe that's knowledge that Scott Thompson, as part of their support of the Thompson Pool, they are willing to pay for half of that. We're having problems with the pool heater, keeping up and keeping it warm. And so it's kind of been an issue the last couple of years. They might be able to hold off until July and do it in next year's budget. So we kind of suggested that he put that in his budget for this year. But Scott Thompson has kind of committed that if we'll do it, he would pay for half of it. So we might even want to do that as a budget amendment and get it done sooner than later.
22 is the one that I'm worried about.
The boilers?
Right. That's why they need to get off there and get some plans. I'm really disappointed in how slowly that's been happening.
And I think part of that is they're so focused on getting the 24/7 done, and they want to do that and open it up and make everybody all happy that that all got done before they start the next, I think is.
Walk and shoot gun.
From some of the bigger donors that.
He was sending out letters.
Okay.
And all of these projects together add up to $45 million is all, right?
That's all.
Oh, well, that's easy.
Okay. Any questions on that? Gary?
What are we going to do with that train? Because it slowly sinks into the soil.
Let's, let's do that when we go over everything. You can rate it the same way I'm going to rate it.
I wish somebody would either step up with that project and.
It's ours.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it was, it was a great idea how many years ago, but now it's just kind of been passed down and forgotten about, and it slowly deteriorates in the park and.
Looks like mange.
You know, so, yeah.
Okay.
And the problem with the younger generation, I don't think they appreciate trains like, sorry, the older generation does, because none of them remember when they ran. So to them, it's like an Amtrak or a, you know, they're, I don't think trains mean anything to them.
Actually, that falls under the category, that is diesel over electric, so.
It's a hybrid.
A rusty piece of a hybrid sitting at a park.
All right, we'll, next is to go into close session.
Make that motion?
Second.
Which means everybody has to leave, sorry. Almost everybody. Yep. All right, thanks, Dan. Yep.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Kriener?
Yes.